I'd like to call the North Bramford Board of Education meeting to order for Tuesday, December 13th at 7:00 PM. We'll call Mary.
Chairman Paul Holter?
Here.
Vice Chair Alfrid?
Here.
Secretary DeZiana?
Here.
Janice McCallum?
Here.
Zachary Canada?
Here.
Kim Dawson?
Here.
Victoria London?
Here.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any visitors? We're missing one student, but we do have the other.
Hi, how are you?
Good, thank you.
It's your turn.
First, I have some field trips to report on. On November 2nd, Catherine Hill, the author of a short movie, visited English classes in the high school as a guest speaker. Ms. Hill resides in Brooklyn and is a professor at Adelphi University. Mr. Ford and Ms. Dodds organized this event with students generating a list of questions prior for the author to respond to during her visit at the school. And on November 9th, 80 sophomores visited the Pequot Museum and Research Center as a part of their coursework in US history. Mrs. Tijanero organized the trip and several social studies colleagues chaperoned. And selected students in each grade were provided SOAR recognition awards on November 23rd during the shortened day before Thanksgiving. As in the past, peer nominations were used to identify the recipients. And this year's event returned to a full school assembly format. Assistant Principal Mrs. Lee organized and hosted the celebratory event. And the North Bramford High School music program hosted two important events this fall. The annual cabaret featuring the winter concert on November 22nd. And the choral program took place on November 11th and was held in the MBIS cap. And the concert band hosted their winter concert on the 22nd. Events involving the music department have been scheduled earlier this fall due to the Drama Club production occurring earlier this year. The NBHS tech department supports the Drama Club production with set design and construction. Due to the NBHS building project, the construction classroom will not be available during the second half of the school year. The Drama Club musical, The Sound of Music, is scheduled for this Thursday, December 15th through the 18th.
They must have really had to scramble to get that ready by December.
They did.
Yes, they couldn't miss it.
The show must go on.
Exactly, and you asked if I was singing when I came in.
Had everyone had a chance to read what's included in the consent agenda?
Okay, then I'll make a motion to approve. Yeah, yeah. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda for December 13th, 2022, Board of Education Special Meeting. Second.
Discussion?
For appointments, I guess one was kind of directed to you, so I guess, page one. Is that, can we talk to, talk a little bit about who Megan is? I don't know who Megan is.
Okay, under appointments?
Yes.
And I'll actually, I'll back up to resignations and publicly thank two very dedicated teachers, and then I'll go to appointments. I'd like to thank Judy Bannon, grade 2 teacher at Jerome Harrison, for her 22 years of service. There's not enough time, and we will recognize Ms. Bannon at a board meeting. And Alexandra Alvarez, both who are going to be retiring at the end of this year. They both have been so impactful in their dedication to the community in and out of the classroom, what they've done, and they've just been wonderful assets to our school system. So I want to recognize Judy Bannon and thank her for all of her service, and we will do a better job when we can publicly thank you at a board meeting. And Alex Alvarez. And then we had a special ed teacher who left to go back and teach English at a neighboring district, leaving the special ed team. We were so fortunate enough to be able to interview seven candidates and pick up Megan Xander, who is a PhD, step 1, who was a child advocate, and went back and went to school to get into the school system and is going to be working for us. So we're thrilled with her background to become a part of our special ed team.
All right, that was my question.
Yes.
Great to know. All right, I think I understand it now.
Yep.
So she's, is she Megan's new hire?
Oh, yeah, she's come right in.
And she's filling a void and then, I don't know, she's still like two seats?
She's filled, she's going to fill one resignation for a special ed teacher that left to go to teach English at a neighboring town.
And then, okay, oh, I see.
Yep.
I just don't know if it's PhD step one, because I don't know what step.
That's the salary schedule.
She's coming in, it's her first job, so she's coming in as a first-year teacher with a PhD, so she'll get paid on the scale.
That's her bill at for that position.
Correct, correct.
And then, I guess all these other questions.
All right.
I have a question about the field trip. I see the cost is around $650 to $700.
Correct.
Are students going to be expected to pay that?
Students?
Yeah.
Parents. So those who, those who need assistance with funding would, would pay, would get assistance in, in the cost of the trip. So.
Are there going to be like fundraising for it?
Are they going to fundraise for the trip?
I would just like as many kids as possible.
Yeah, we have in our plans to provide fundraisers.
Okay, I just would love as many kids as possible. We're just getting the economy and the financial burden, and we're pretty much a two-potter town, right?
I think.
It's a struggle. I would love it, just.
When you, when you went, how many years ago, the last time you went?
Close to close.
Yeah.
So last time I went is over 10 years ago, when I was in therapy, and the cost of the trip was about $570 back then.
Yeah, it doesn't seem like it's gone up that much.
It really hasn't gone up that much since the last time I went. It's still, it's still pretty good, you know, amounts of money, which is why I want to get committed to going on a trip so that we could survey our parents and see if it's, if it's doable. I need to, I want to hit a certain threshold to make the trip attainable for us. The tour company wants us to make a commitment right around now. I plan on using the month of January to advertise what the trip is. We're going to have parents in for a question night with the tour company, and money's are not due until the middle to the end of February. So I'll know by that point that we have enough people that are interested in making this trip a reality, but I can't do that without you giving a thumbs up.
Yeah.
But the payments are not all at once, they're overtime, over three payments.
Trip won't take place until November after Election Day next year.
So they have like payment plans or a lot of times fundraising payments? Because I think people would say no if they have to upfront, like, right, where they would say yes if they know, oh, I could do that for someone.
Well, we'll have a timeline, so I estimate that from the beginning to the end, if you're saving $20 a week?
Yeah.
It's doable. And we're not asking for an all-in-one shot. We'll add different points throughout the year, money's due until the middle of September.
I'd love to see this trip back.
Yeah, me too.
Like, I have a long time, a long time coming for this.
I remember my eighth-grade trip to DC. It's wonderful. Great memories. It was a long time ago, Zach.
Yeah, no.
My eighth-grade trip.
Well, I didn't, I actually didn't, I forfeited on mine, but I remember the price was about this much, so that was a long time ago.
Yeah.
So if you think about it, I didn't really, all that much, which is about $400 a day, give or take.
Right.
What, how many students does that, if everybody?
That specific grade has about 110 students.
110. Is there like a target chaperone list, like ratio you want to see?
So I, when I've got on this trip before, I like to have one chaperone for every eight to 10 students.
That handles pretty good. Like, you wouldn't want to increase, or is that pretty good for you? Did it work out last time?
That's perfect. So the structure that if we take a trip, there will be a chaperone for every group, groups of between eight to 10 students. Then on top of that, we'll have a person who's in charge of each individual bus, for medical issues, if there's any type of disciplinary issues. Things come up on a trip like this. And then you'll have Jen Tetsu, who's our dean of students, who will be the trip leader.
And this is a new, Friendship Tours is a new company?
No, Friendship Tours is a company. Jen Tetsu is our dean of students, who's doing all the labor, getting all this information. Jen Tetsu has ran trips at the high school for years, and Friendship Tours is now a commodity.
I'm sorry, you mean it was?
No, not now.
Okay.
Overseas to Europe are trips.
Yeah, with them, I just didn't know who you was.
Yep.
And what happens to those that don't make the trip, children or kids?
There will be an alternate, virtual field trip for those students. It's a curriculum connected trip, so anything curriculum-wise, if the students are experiencing well on the trip, students that have a name and experience.
Perfect.
Can I have a phone call? Chairman Paul Holter?
Yes.
Vice Chair Alfrid?
Yes.
Secretary DeZiana?
Janice McCallum?
Yes.
Zachary Canada?
Yes.
Kim Dawson?
Yes.
Victoria London?
Yes.
Rolls right into you.
Okay. We have no record, we're no recognition at this time. We certainly have plenty to be proud of. I did send you the T-Bird news and the Auger House update, which I think there was quite a bit of content in there to see what was happening in those two areas. But communications, you have the reports from the administrators. I don't know if there's any questions at this time. They're busy, obviously, getting ready for the break and getting as much done as they possibly can. We're obviously in tune with the weather. We had a little weather incident the other night. We were able to, you know, safely get the students in and home, and, and so now we're into that season, so we'll be keeping everyone apprised as we move forward. So if there are no other questions.
Regarding Auger House, can you tell, communication you sent out, where do they get, do they collect the cans? Do cans get donated? Like, how do they get their funds for that?
They do both.
Okay.
So they're, they're out in the work community, so there's opportunities in the workforce or for people to drop at the Auger House. So we're trying to, and.
Is it, does it, does it need a location to drop cans off, so you can, like, you know, buy a load, drop load of cans, like a brand over there, kind of thing?
For their can, can collection, do they have a specific location that they?
I don't know if there's specific sites around. I think that I know that some places do drop them off right at the site itself.
At the Auger House.
Trash bags are fine?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. And then the people, I suppose, funds to support some of their trips, and they supplement it with their anything's possible laundry business. So they do have an income source coming in, so it's then kind of an additional thing that they're doing for a company.
That's good.
No, so if you'd like to, please. Also, when you leave, if you are going back towards North Bramford tonight, leaving Norfolk, look at the Auger House. The students decorated the home.
Gorgeous.
And the lights and the wreaths. It's, it's really beautiful, so we're really proud. Okay.
Well, I think I'll have to.
Yeah, I have a question. For the BIS assembly, do parents have the access to the BIS assembly?
Yes, we live stream it.
Is it, it's, where does that live stream?
It's on the DHS PTO homepage.
Oh, okay, all right. All right, I missed that. And then, high school, this third bullet down for Wesleyan University, that's pretty interesting. Is there a way to expand on something like that further? Or, like, they reach out to us, I imagine, though?
They reach out to us, and the challenge is that most of the kids aren't all at other school-based, but it's after school.
Right.
And it's not families to transport them there, but it's an opportunity that if kids provide for these two or not, not three falls. I can get an update about how many kids have been kind of.
On that note, my son did that last year, by the way. So he loved the opportunity, he loved being there. So you, I drove him to classes in the afternoons, it was right after we got out of school. I used to drive him to Wesleyan, this is before he got his license, and he would teach a class with kids, like Wesleyan students, and you have your professor, and it was a great opportunity. But it was hard, because it's work on top of your already full academic schedule, so it will stay with a lot of actual work for him, but he really enjoyed it.
Is it like a gen ed course selection that can be transferred to other universities, or is it specifically for Wesleyan?
They did use a whole pretty of different entry-level college courses that kids can opt from. Southern has done the same thing, so they usually give us things that are available for kids to take or see or choose.
Okay.
They're usually intro classes, like, in the choices, I think he had his intro to psychology, intro to mythology, and I think there was two other courses, and you select one, two, or three, and then he got into the mythology, which was awesome. He loved it, so.
It'd be pretty awesome if it worked, they got a good carpool.
Yeah, yeah, if you want to take it with a friend. So it was nice that he was in a class with someone else, but that year, which was last year, three students took all the class at Wesleyan. Yeah.
We're given that, it's some great opportunities.
All right.
Wesleyan's a great school.
Any other questions? Nope.
Finance.
Finance. Send that with a smile, finance.
We have officially begun building the payroll HR modules in UNIS. We're starting with the, what they call the, so we're basically figuring out how we want the employee information sorted, and what we're going to want to see, and how everything's going to tie together. So our next session is this coming Thursday, and we are still dealing with some, I'm going to say glitches on the financial side, some of the approval pass for requisitions and internal budget transfers that a principal may want to do at his or her school. Sometimes don't always work the way they should, but our team has been working closely with Tyler to get those things ironed out and hopefully fixed so that they don't continue to be an issue. As far as the general fund, not much has changed since we met last month. Once we come back from the holiday break, I will be looking at the encumbrances for payroll. So we'll be halfway through the year, believe it or not, and I'll take a look at the encumbrances that I now have on an Excel spreadsheet, because we are still running payroll in our own financial system, to make sure that those encumbrances are as accurate as can, can be. So those are used, those payroll encumbrances are used along with our purchase orders in the system to help project the end of the year balance for June or year. The health insurance deficit again was reduced by payments through employee contributions, and we will keep looking at all of our utility lines. Now that the winter season is officially upon us, we'll hopefully, you know, they'll stay or get better than what we have anticipated. I also provided you with a report on Fund 25, which is in your packet. It is a summary report.
We have a severance, when does that severance have to be created?
So that's been there for a couple of months now. That reflects three retirees, two teachers and, actually, four retirees. Two teachers and two secretaries that have left the district, and for the contract language, they were paid for approved sick time when they left. So that's what that expenditure is.
That's almost $100,000.
Yes, over four people. The average teacher payout for sick, for sick time when they leave is around $38,000. For Fund 25, you'll see, it is a summary report, but this report is actually from UNIS. We started our new fiscal year '22, '23 with 1.2 million, and we currently have $438,000 in year-to-date expenditures, $97,000 in encumbrances, which leaves a balance remaining in Fund 25 of $730,000.
Remind me what Fund 25 is?
So those are all the little carryover amounts that the town has let us.
And this is the total of all of that?
Correct.
All right.
I have a question on the, on the cover sheet.
Sure.
Summary, maybe there's a number off, or maybe I missed reading something. It says 1.26, and then it says 1.56. Maybe it's the dates. Oh, that was in July, sorry.
So under the revised budget, you'll see the 1.266.
Ah, sorry.
Yeah. So just so I can, the original is what we run over from the prior fiscal year, and then the transfers and adjustments are everything that we had to do to get to the, get the number to where it needed to be for July 1st.
Anything else that I've noted that we should know?
I don't know where. We are getting ready for calendar year-end, which means W2s and 1099s. We do have a training on that tomorrow with UNIS, since it'll be the first time we're processing those in the new financial system, 1099 specifically. And budget for '23, '24 is in for the swing.
Last one, if we talked about, is it an action plan for the funds, the resources, Fund 25, Fund 4? You want to put that on a January agenda, or February, where do you want to put that?
Fund 25, yeah. We could put it on, Mary, how about for the Fund 25, what are our strategies to pay down the Fund 25 to?
I just want to add that the majority of the Fund 25 funds right now are, I'm going to say, tagged for the individual buildings and apartments, because that is how we got to where we needed to be for this current fiscal year, because our status quo was almost 4%, and we only got $300,000. So the majority of our Fund 25 right now is tagged.
It's 4% already.
Yeah.
Probably not going to be much left to worry about.
Can we just put it together so that we can see it laid out, where it's tagged to?
Sure.
All right, any other questions? Okay, there's a new course proposal. It does not have to be approved by the board, but it's on there for informational. And Dr. Welch is here. If there's any questions, I don't know if you had a chance to read through the Roman medieval, 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 medieval history elective?
Is, is there going to be multiple sections of it? Like, is there a college prep and honors, the, like?
All levels, yeah.
There'll be all levels of it? It sounds like a really good course.
Yeah, it should be, and it's, you know, looking to do something that's a little older, sort of, a lot of which is in modern history, so this has been an area that's not been present in very, so looking for teachers, looking for teachers, and I know kids are already expressed an interest in it.
So they can see how history keeps repeating itself, that we do not learn?
We're going backwards to go forwards.
Exactly.
We have to.
Maybe that's exactly, go backwards, go forwards, maybe.
These four dimensions, that is, one down here is social responsibility contributor, those four down here in brackets, that is, what are, what's the story behind this? So the SOAR rubrics, that, I mean, if you go with the V, you're familiar with the Jerome, it's kind of the acronym that sets the social expectations that we have in kids.
It's the high school one.
So SOAR is the acronym of the high school, and this college school, that's SOAR.
SOAR. So it's like rock, SOAR?
It's just worded differently. I'm an African person, too, so that, sorry about that.
Okay. That was a joke. It was a bad one, I'm sorry, Zach. That was bad. All right, any questions on the course? And like, we obviously commend the, the social studies department for bringing this forward and doing the work, the diligence with the.
Want with that kickoff?
Next, next year, right?
Next fall?
Yeah.
And, yeah, Scott echoed that, too, second year, Janice.
Had a great job.
The department leader did a really good job of developing this, and, you know, she could go back and do a couple things, and she went over the top with further expanding and putting some thought into it. So it's going to be a great course, has a lot of inquiry and creative community, some real problem-based learning projects that are suited to making things visible in all the district goals.
Okay. Manufacturing, Carter and I will both be visiting Platt Tech Target this January 11th to go through and evaluate their current curriculum for our manufacturing initiative and to look at the hardware that would be needed for four to six classes. So we'll have more information at the January meeting of what we saw. We already have priced out the building itself and the cost for that. We just need an update for curriculum and for all of the materials for that. So we're making.
Do you think it costs that out, just there going to be like a business plan percentage?
There will be.
Yeah.
And it's going to, it's going to tail out past the completion of the high school, obviously, because we can't do anything in that back parking area with demolition and then the removal of all that storage site. So we're going to gauge it towards that completion date, but we want to have everything, all our ducks in a row for state support and for town support.
So what would be your targeted school year to start for that?
It would be at least two years out that we'd be able to do this. Obviously, we're going to start the demo, and we'll get to that with the building project update, but, you know, when you project out a year and a half completion and then, what that, it's not, it's going to be a quick build. It's a, it's a, it's a steel box. It's a very simple construct, but you have to have the space.
Steel, yeah.
Yeah, the, yeah, steel building, sorry. So we'll keep you updated on that, and we'll have information in Jan, at the January board meeting. Town manager, I had a conversation with him, actually met with Mr. Downs regarding the surprise visits. You'll see them on YouTube, where they committed, want to video your staff and office space, and they did go to North Bramford Town Hall, they've been to Madison, and, and they come in and, and you just have to play along with them, and so. So there, there's, there's two individuals that are going around, and they're, they're trying to engage you to either contacting law enforcement to come, because under freedom of information.
You were talking about just two individuals.
Two individuals, so they go all, they're going all around the state of Connecticut. So.
It shows that they have the amendment rights.
Amendment rights to, to video in their workforce, right.
And then we go into some town halls, because they're public buildings, they can't go into the schools. And then you leave them and tell them, no, it becomes. And they, they get very aggressive and insulting. They want a verbal reaction, a physical reaction. They want some, you know, they want to make.
They're going to fight.
They're going to two kids.
Right.
Yeah. It, it came up at our ACES meeting, because those are, they're various people from different boards, and they came to their.
To their schools, right.
So they did come here?
No, they did not. And technically, we are a school with our FRC program here, so we would not allow anyone into our area, just so you're aware of that. So, but you can watch them on YouTube, they're quite entertaining. Any questions on that?
No.
Yes, I have a hundred.
I figured that. Right. This is, we're, we're on to the construction project, and I know there was a meeting last evening, but I met last week with Kevin Pelgato, and we just put together a timeline for things that they're going to, they will update for the renovation project, looking at late February. And it's really dependent upon the part that we're waiting on, which, is it going to come in late December, early January? Then there's a 30-day window for installation. So we're, we're really on hold until we get this trained mechanical unit. So we're guesstimating, it could be here next week through January 2nd possibly, and everything will go around that mechanical unit.
Chillers.
It's chillers. So that being said, all of these dates below are target dates, there's nothing in stone here. You know, the, in my humble opinion, I think we're going to be able to get through the winter months into February-ish, late, around the, the break. And then we would be very flexible in our scheduling and meeting requirements of 180 school days for our students at the high school, and we would be flexible if we needed to run half-days in order to do, you know, a move. But it's least amount of disruption as possible, but we're really, until this part comes in, it's, it's. But we're really, until this part comes in, it's, it's. It's, yeah.
Well, we knew there was going to be some disruption. I mean, like you said, then.
Right. So a lot of things have already been boxed at the high school. We're going to be storing some things. And, you know, once we do this move, it'll be all hands on deck and everyone's been made well aware. There's already been a couple of meetings with the high school staff and their team. So they're well aware of.
But there won't be construction workers and school while students are there.
No, no. Nor will there be when, we won't move over there until they're out. And then it's the demo part that's the next major phase.
Materials delayed until late February 2023. It does say work will take place late during April, spring break, right? But.
It will be gone.
I'm assuming that we'll be moving in.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. We'll warn again.
And there's work to be done. So what I don't want to happen, because Gilbane likes to bend and flex, is that we have students and teachers in there and we have a bunch of construction workers who aren't background checked or fingerprinting in our schools.
They are background checked. We've done.
You can confirm it?
We've done over. We've done over 300.
If it was your daughter in that school, would you be comfortable with a bunch of people coming in and out? I'm just saying, because you're pretty strict. I just, if you said, I'd be comfortable, I'd be comfortable.
I would be hesitant to say yes or no right now, but I do confirm they are background.
Okay. Not saying anything specifically about construction workers. I'm just saying.
It does say April, April break.
I would agree.
It does say April break. You're, you're not going to see a money pit. It's not going to be construction people with.
Hanging.
That's not going to happen. So April break.
The people itself, it's the doors opening, not the access, accessibility, the school, it's not necessarily the people doing the work. It just sets us up for.
And you just raised a point there. It was not a badge and how many people come and go.
That, that's all I'm saying. It's not the actual people, like, okay, if we got
We do see during April break.
I do, but I also know Gilbane likes to bend and flex the rules. So I don't want to, what I don't want to hear, so I'm saying it publicly, when I really don't want something to happen, I say it publicly, I don't want construction going on in the school while the students and the teachers are there because I don't think it's safe. Not necessarily because of who's doing the work, but because the doors are open, the, you know, we don't know, you know, how that's going to play out.
Their safety with how they've handled things, every single person has been vetted that's there now. There's no contact at all. They're separated when they come. So when they say April break, it's when no one's there.
Yeah.
And we will make sure.
More of the accessibility.
Our, our head of security is charged with handling all of that. So he is, he, he does all the background checks. He works with Gilbane on all of that. He will make sure that it's April break, no one in the building.
Perfect. And it's not necessarily about the people. It's about the doors opening and someone coming in presenting as a, you know what I'm saying? We live in a crazy world now. I just don't want to leave us, our kids.
Five gallon pump and keep the door jar for five seconds.
Something stupid like that. Something stupid like that.
To your point, Scott.
Yeah.
People break, it is. Okay.
Because we'll have been in there potentially from the end of February, March, it will be, have been in there for six, seven, eight weeks.
Yeah.
According to this, in that new building. So, okay.
The only concern just to, and see the moving data, we're booking a February break. I've kind of been hesitant to like champion the idea of doing that so quickly after the whole building's been certified, all the mechanicals have been squared, whatever, without having like, I don't know, feeling teachers and staff don't get a second or two to breathe, right? And I mean, they'll, they're just like, here's a room, and then kids the next, next week.
Well, they're already scheduling with Mr. Steffler to have time where they're going to be going over.
The draft of the schedule is based on some of the things that Gilbane shared with us.
Right.
In company, moving companies moved back in on the 5th of January. I can do a walkthrough of some things that's boxed already. One thing that we'd like to do is when students are not in the building, later exam days, after the school, students are dismissed, we're going to preload some of the new things that we don't use immediately to that long weekend. It's a long weekend. We don't need to have everything. So Myers may come in and do that with a certain exam week. And they're also going to work on Martin's team day in the notes. So we've got a draft that we sent to Scott's office. Consider it once we know some things in detail and finalized. That would pass some orientation days for staff as well as students. So it's not flip a switch and get in.
Right. Yeah, well, there's going to be a lot of switches in that, at least they're unpromoted.
And moving is one of the highest, highest stressors on the psyche. So like what we don't want is teacher stress and kid stress at the same time because who's going to diffuse that, right? Like, and it's environmental. So whatever we can do, and like we keep saying this, like.
That's also Florida too. He's got to understand his building in and out.
Yeah. Everybody does. Not just the teacher, you're right, Florio's team.
Yeah, there's a whole transition process.
Yeah, yes.
Right.
Dining hall?
Yeah, it's the kitchen.
Yeah, we're going to be doing bag lunches the first few days. The caps, we're already transitioning the food process over to preparing for.
Service, where are we with that?
Bag lunches.
That's kind of tangential, but. Oh, gosh. Wait, hang on. Mary, put it on the agenda for next month. There's a section.
Yeah. So we'll talk about that next one.
Can you just put on the agenda, talk about.
She doesn't do service?
But she's going to write it in the notes.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha.
Yeah, I want it in the notes.
Food service.
Okay. Food, food service, where are we with food service? On the agenda for next month? I just want it on the, in the minutes. Thank you.
All right. Anything else on the renovation, Beth?
Just saying that I was interested in, if anyone else is interested, Monday we're doing a walk-through at 6:00. And that would be nearly over, which one, like a parking lot?
Monday.
Monday at 6:00?
Monday at 6:00.
Who wants the walk-through with the two of them?
I'm sorry.
Who's the walk-through with the two of them?
Uh, it's usually just, just really, yeah, just the.
That's, that's what it's asked, I'm just.
Yeah, it is. So.
Keep saying. Four, three, four, you said?
Yes, because we're going to.
The 19th.
That's right, you can't.
I'm going to be.
Oh, you gotta wear shoes, the proper shoes.
Um.
No, like.
No, wait, you're.
They always call us boots and hells, but they didn't.
No open-toe shoes.
Why, no open-toe, I don't, I don't.
I'm not going to call it a minute. Boots. Boots on the ground. All right. So speaking of walkthroughs, we'll segue into, we're also planning to do a, ring out the old, bring in the new. So when we get more clarity on when we're going to get into our new building, before the old building comes down, when the new building is open, we'll open both sites and have the community be able to come in. There's a lot of nostalgia for graduates to go through the old building and then we'll roll into the new building.
I'm sorry.
Skipping, okay.
I, I just went there. I have no nostalgia. I'm glad it's going.
So, no side comments. There's some nostalgia here. And then, so we'll have our kids get involved and give tours and have some music and some food and really.
Photographer.
Photographer, drone. We'll do it right. So.
Nice. I like that.
No date yet, just until we know here. But that is the plan.
Last comment.
Were you on Sledgeham?
The windows are almost.
Yeah, I saw today they were buttoning it down.
I sent them to confirm before.
That's great.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's pretty close.
It's really that piece that we're waiting for. Well, I guess it's larger than a piece, but.
Well, yeah, doors. So for community reports, we're going to have to go out of order because we're going to go into executive session to learn about it before you vote on it. So we'll, we'll skip over that first part of committee reports. Is it cold?
No, I just got.
Me and Zach are slammed by this. It's cold?
It's not cold.
I don't know. I'm, I've been waiting.
But I've been here before. I can take, I'm doing this one here.
Okay. So budget, we don't have, pension.
Anybody want pensions or policy?
Oh, you need to wait, you might, oh, that's okay. Policy.
Can I make a comment on pension? Well, yeah. Well, if they, there'd be times that I, it's like four or five.
To read somebody else's.
Yes, and I mentioned the last two. It's like, unless I'm, it's a, they usually meet at the town hall at 4:30 or 4:50, which is like, basically I think a half day. Now, the bonuses, they only need like once a quarter. So it's not like they're in the world, but it's not really on the calendar.
Well, that's something we have, we can't, well, I guess we could do another pension. We, we need to vote and we have to vote on it in order for the town council.
We can do it on the next.
Yeah.
Agenda. Another thing to add to the next agenda is.
A pension replacement.
Yeah. Pension replacement on the agenda.
That's good, Scott.
Thank you.
That's huge. So guys did.
Yeah, thank you.
Policy.
All right, so.
We, we have some.
We have these, we're second reading, yeah. Just make a motion to.
Yes.
Um, I'm making a motion to approve policies, P155, P11020, P1225, P330, and regulations are 1020 and are 3300. I'd say that's seen through the board.
Second? I was waiting to make sure you're done.
Discussion. Everyone has a second in this? Yes. Okay. Mary Volpavon, Chairman Volpavon.
Yes.
Vice Chair Nafre.
Yes.
Secretary Ziana.
Yes.
Jennifer Salma.
Yes.
Zachary Kanega.
Yes.
Kim Dawson.
Yes.
Cory Lam.
Yes.
We had response from our attorney and then we sent that out. I sent that communication back from the attorney. So if you want, I can bring her response to the next meeting. You can look at what her recommendation was, was to not do it as a policy. And then you can have it and read it.
Yeah, let's circle that loop. So the communication, communication, communication. If we can put that on the agenda. What do you call it? Procedure, the communication procedure. If we can put that on the agenda. Sorry, I was trying not to call.
Communication, communication from the lawyer regarding the.
Communication.
Yeah, exactly, that.
Um, and. ACES, we had our meeting last week. It was a holiday presentation to students. They compete, they do artwork and then they select the winning artwork. So this year, our t-shirt that we got this year from the students.
Cute. That's cute.
That's cute. And then we have no cards. So all the kids come in, they get a, you know, um, they show their artwork up on the screen and they get a, a present and then they have a luncheon on that ACES. So it's really, always a really nice meeting. So that was the beginning of the meeting. Then we had in-depth discussion about Head Start program that serves middlesex county. It's a program, what it sounds like Head Start, which is to give kids who are disadvantaged, hopefully a boost. It serves like the preschool. It's from being pregnant to, I think, three, age three. So we talked about that in depth and, you know, with the normal curriculum update and finance update each year doing, they're ahead right now. So that's good. And that's about it. So that is ACES.
Is there anything else on building committee or did we cover it prior?
I got enough.
That is enough? Okay. Um, you said that all night. I am going to just skip to visitors and press and go to the board because we will have to go do executive session and you guys don't have to stay for that. So I just, I don't think we have any visitors and press because we already went through that. Go to the board.
Oh, I went to breakfast with Santa and I would like to thank all the students and the teachers that showed up. Every school was represented through choir or instrument or both. And it was very nice. The only thing is, we need to get a better sound system for Mr. Oberg because some parents got a little rowdy in the back because the acoustics in the cafeteria do not lend themselves to hearing the students. And unless you were like first two tables, it was difficult. So maybe you could.
Where do you want me to get, to get my security, to get those rowdy parents to settle down? That might be easier.
I need a sound system so that they can actually hear.
Okay.
That's funny.
And I went to the tree lighting. Thank you for going to that. I went to the tree lighting. The courses that were there were phenomenal. I mean, it was a great event. I had to go in. I've been to ours for many, many, many years. And it was a great event.
Kids do it every year.
Yeah. Of course, it was a ton of. It really did.
Um, the play that's happening this week, we have students from all four of our schools in it and they have done such a good job. And I'm not at all biased because my daughter's in it, but I highly suggest anybody who can see it, go see it. It is really, really well done. And then I went to the Jolly Jam at Jerome Harrison last Friday that was centered around giving back to our community. So our little students gave back to all sorts of different organizations in our community at that event. And it was nice to have both kindergartners and second grade chorus sing and to have normalcy. It's been nice.
That's been echoed through all the buildings with going back to the assemblies. The kids are really happy to be able to do these things. And I know the administrators have worked hard to make sure that we continue to get back to that point where it's normal. So thank you to the administrators.
Thank you, huge kudos.
Yeah.
All right. So, yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to say just the next board meeting is January 19th. I'll repeat that at the very end. We'll put that in your calendars because I know I'm, who am I? Justin Mitchell.
And I'll make a motion to adjourn to executive session as per section 1-225 of the Connecticut General Statutes, as permitted by section 1-200, 6A of the Connecticut General Statutes, to discuss agenda item 8A negotiations.
So we can stay here. We'll close out. I'll close out and we'll stay right here.
And we're doing that so you guys can actually go home.
Happy holidays, everybody.
Happy holidays, everybody.
Happy holidays, everybody.